Don't try to ask.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll just pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day. We especially give you thanks this day as we remember those who have served our nation. We ask you to uphold them and lift them up, especially those who are still serving our nation. May they ever be a witness of proper vocation. May we ever be a support for them for their great sacrifices. In Christ's name we pray, amen. All right, we are in the book of Colossians. I believe we're in, still in, chapter two. We stopped at verse fifteen last week. Just to recap. Paul has been emphasizing Christ. Emphasizing staying with what was originally preached to them against whatever Paul's teaching has entered into Colossae. Colosei, Colossae. That has led them astray. And he sums up this previous section here, basically in verse thirteen is where he starts to sum it up. Basically, you were dead in your trespasses, so you were dead, but you were made alive, you were regenerated. And this regeneration comes from the forgiveness of sins. So regeneration and forgiveness of sins is tied together. It is, in other words, regeneration is based upon justification or standing before God. And we are justified before God in Christ Jesus by his death on the cross and his resurrection from the grave. And there's nothing else. And so we start with verse sixteen, that's where we're gonna start today, therefore. So because of that, because we were dead, but we were generated through the justification of sins, and this put to shame those who tried to stop Christ. Let no one pass judgment on you in questions of food or drink or with regard to a festival or a new moon. These are a shadow of things to come, but the substance belongs to Christ. Let no one disqualify you insisting on asceticism and worship of angels, going on in detail about visions puffed up without reason by a sensuous mind and not holding fast to the head, from whom the whole body nourished and knit together through its joints and ligaments grows with a growth that is from God. If with Christ you die to the elemental spirits of the world, why, as if you were still alive in the world, do you submit to regulations? Do not handle, do not taste, do not touch, referring to things that all perish as they are used according to human precepts and teachings. These have indeed an appearance of wisdom and promoting self-made religion and asceticism and severity to the body, but they are of no value in stopping the indulgence of the flesh. So because we are justified in Christ and we are made alive, in other words, our regeneration is started based off our justification. When it comes to religious observances, we are not to pass judgment on one another about them. So in the early church, you had Gentile and Jewish believers, which is kind of some sloppy categories. But what that means is though you have those who worshipped not the one true God, who worshipped pagan gods, whether that was the Roman pantheon or something else, who became Christians. And you had those who worshipped the one true God, were waiting for the Messiah and believed that Jesus was the Messiah. There was rituals in both of those religious backgrounds. And in particular, in Judaism, the rituals were connected to the faith. There was a lot of observance of the rituals tied to the faith. Now, it wasn't that the rituals justified. We know this off of the Old Testament. One of the themes of the minor prophets, quite honestly, is that they weren't worshiping in faith. They were doing all the outward acts, but they weren't actually worshiping. And that's not what justified them before God. And I'm blanking on the minor prophet, I need to look this up because it comes up all the time. I think it's Micah, who says that their burnt offerings is a stench in my nose because they're not taking care of the orphaned and the widow. They're not actually doing the things that are the result of faith. And this is an important thing. I'm listening through Bonhaper's Cost of Discipleship. Again, it just reminded me of this, that, you know, this idea of costly grace and cheap grace. Cheap grace says you're forgiven of your sins, don't change anything. But costly grace says you are forgiven of your sins, now conform your life to Christ. And so we who are Christians, when we conform our life to Christ, that puts us in uncomfortable places. We forgive our enemies. We treat others the way we want to be treated. And that has a natural implication on how we interact with our neighbor, as a natural implication of how we evaluate the things in this world. So when, the easiest example to do this, and this is why I kind of harp on it, the easiest example to do this is that there's not a political party that is Christian. Every political party takes part of Christian ideals and incorporates it, but also looks at other Christian ideals and rejects it. So, you know, when people come to me and ask, who should I vote for on an election? I say, what is it that you value? And what candidate do you believe best reflects those values? Vote for that candidate, knowing that you were voting for a sinner and that there is no candidate that will perfectly reflect your values. I mean, Christians even argue over what is Christian values, let's be honest, right? And there is illegitimate debate to be had of should the government be doing this or should churches and individuals be doing these things? And that's part of the conversation in the public sphere. But our faith is going to influence how we view certain policies at a governmental level. It's going to view how we, or shape how we view interaction with our neighbors, what we want in our community, what we don't want in our community, and all sorts of various things like that. So I'm not trying to get political, it's just, it's a very easy, people kind of tend to get that one very, very easily. So our faith has actions tied to it. This is James Hall, you show me your faith, I'll show you my works. The result of faith is conforming our life to Christ, which is going to be visible in our works. So our works are not eating particular foods and refraining from particular foods, observing certain days and not observing, or not observing certain days. Now again, in Judaism, that is a big thing. And what we would call, just using the terms that are given to us, what we would call basically Judaism before Christ. I would still call it Christianity, but whatever. There was feast and festivals that they were supposed to observe. Jesus does this, right? Jesus observes feasts and festivals. The Gospel of John is very explicit about that. Jesus observes all three Passovers during his earthly ministry that occur in various other things. Jesus in John ten is at the temple during the Feast of Dedication. Do you know what feast that is? It's Hanukkah. Jesus observes Hanukkah, right? Now, does that happen as our Hanukkah practices that we see culturally today with lighting of menorahs and things like that? I have zero clue what the practices of Hanukkah were back then. Because Hanukkah is not a, in the Old Testament, Hanukkah is not a mandated observance. Hanukkah happens during the intertestimonial, or intertestament times. The destruction of the first temple and its rebuilding. Not, to be, not the Babylonian one though, but the Maccabean revolt. So should Christians, therefore, since Jesus observed Hanukkah, should Christians observe Hanukkah? And the answer is, should is the wrong question. Or maybe it's the right question. Can they observe Hanukkah? Yes, you can, if you want to. You can light a menorah, you know, do that. Is it a good idea? Probably not. And the reason why is that it would send a very confusing signal to other people. And why we love people who are Jewish, practicing Jews. That religion has explicitly rejected Jesus Christ. This would be the equivalent of sitting there saying, we're going to celebrate Kwanzaa in our house, or we're gonna celebrate Diwala in our house. Well, those are tied to non-Christian religions, right? So should you practice them? No, not a good idea. Could you observe them? In theory, yes, you can. Again, not an idea, as long as, as long as you're not rejecting Christ. As long as you're not rejecting Christ. But they are tied to false religions. And so, not a great idea. Shouldn't do it. It probably shouldn't do it. Yes.
Do the modern Christian Jews practice Hanukkah?
Yes, many Mezzionic Jews still observe the Old Testament holidays. It will still observe the Feast of Dedication in one form or another. And that is because culturally, that is the background that they came out of. For me, I'll speak for me, for my family, not coming from an ethnically or religiously Jewish background, that is not my culture. I did not grow up observing those festival days, those feast days and things like that. And so it would be very odd for me to do it. But if you grew up in that culture, and again, especially in regards to the Old Testament, there, and you want to observe those festivals, then go, then do it. And we're not gonna pass judgments on Mezzionic Jews that do that. And Mezzionic Jews, according to this passage here, should not pass judgment on Christians who don't observe those days. Do you have to observe Easter? No. Do you have to observe Christmas? No. Do you have to worship on Sunday? No. But what about remember the Sabbath day and keep it holy? Or remember the Sabbath day by keeping it holy, depending on what translation you might have. Well, what's the Sabbath day? It's Saturday. It's not Sunday. It's Saturday, that's why there's Seventh Day Adventist, and that's why they worship on Saturdays. Because they take that. Now, we have said since the, since the beginning of the Reformation, and this is even in our confessions, that well, this is, the commandment of the Sabbath, according to its literal sense, does not apply to us Christians, for its external observance was a shadow of Christ. Taking a day off of the week and trusting the Lord to provide. It was part of the sacrificial system. Sacrifices are ended in Christ. Hebrews makes that very, very clear. He's the once and for all propitiation for our sins, payment for our sins. So we don't have to worship on a particular day. So why do we worship on Sundays? Well, Sunday is the first day of the week. And if you open up any calendar, even though they're all named after pagan gods, you know, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursdays, Thursdays, you know, things like that. The first day of the week is what? It's Sunday. And so that is when we gather together. Because that ties to Easter, the day that Jesus rose from the dead. But there is no command that you have to worship on Sunday, or only on Sundays. You know, church back in, up until last, I can't say last century anymore, because that's the nineteen hundreds. But at least until the eighteen hundreds, church used to be Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon, and Wednesday night. Just pretty much everybody went to those services. Now, a lot of churches also had a morning service just about every day of the week, but not always. Your liturgical churches did, I should say. Your more radical Protestant churches did not. Some churches still observe that, still have a Monday morning, or Sunday morning and a Sunday evening service and then a Wednesday night service. Usually the Wednesday night service is more relaxed. It would be in the Sunday evening service or the Wednesday evening service that so the lectionary, right? Churches historically have had lectionaries. Lectionaries are selected readings. In Luther's times, so the fifteen hundreds, it was a Gospel and Epistle lesson. There was no Old Testament lesson. The Old Testament would be taught through, if it was, either on Sunday evening or Wednesday night. They would teach through books, you know. What we think of Bible study happened in the context of worship service. Bible study is only a couple hundred years old, by the way. That's why sermons were longer, by the way, because you're, I mean, it's a Bible study and sermon all at once. If you go back and you read old sermons, even just from a couple hundred years ago, you won't see the formulas that you see today. Like a lot of Lutheran preaching is law, gospel, application, right? Kind of, here's the law, here's the gospel, here's what it looks like in practice kind of thing. Read Luther's sermon. There's a whole lot that doesn't fit to either of those three categories. Because he's just, he's doing a Bible study at the same time, right? Whereas I got, you know, max fifteen minutes, that's going long, I go over that. And so it's like, you gotta cut out all the other stuff you normally do. I still try to have some sort of explanation of the start of the service, or the start of the sermon, of what's going on in the text or whatever, but I can't go anywhere near in depth as we do here in class.
Well, I like having the Bible study more relaxed because I can, I can ask questions. If we were here, I was like, what do you mean? What is he talking about?
Oh, yeah. Right? So so we are no longer beholden to the ceremonial law in the Old Testament. And the ceremonial law includes the festival dates, includes the food, it includes what you wear, how you cut your hair, you know, things like that. That has gone away. Its ultimate fulfillment is in, is in Christ, as our great high priest. And so you can wear blended cloth, you can eat bacon, you can eat shrimp. You don't have to. You don't have to. You could observe the Feast of Booths or not. That's up to you and your conscience. All those things were to point to Christ. And so like Passover, pointed to the coming Lamb. It pointed back to history taking the Israelites out of slavery in Egypt and pointed forward to Christ, who takes us out of slavery to sin by being the Passover lamb. And that our sins are placed upon him. So let no one disqualify you insisting on asceticism and worship of angels, going on in detail about visions puffed up without reason by his sinuous, sensuous mind and not holding fast to the head, from whom the whole body nourished and knit together through its joints and ligaments grows with a growth that is from God. So because we don't have to worship, or observe these things, we're on verse eighteen of chapter two.
Oh, thanks, Pastor. So I need to hear what you say here first.
So since we no longer have to observe those things, since we don't pass judgment on one another, you don't have to live an ascetic lifestyle. Guess when we're gonna bring this up as Lutherans? Well, when it comes to monks and nuns, right? In Roman Catholic theology, vocations are only those jobs in the church. Priest or nun, basically. You have your priests, all, from Pope to local priest. So monks, priests, nuns. Those are the vocations in the Catholic Church. Because they are doing a greater work than the average Christian. They are doing a greater work for God. They are doing a greater work for society because of that. They are meriting grace, and the grace isn't just for them, but it's for the community that they are in, even though they have removed themselves from community. And so they live a very ascetic lifestyle. You know, monks' robes are too hot in the summer and too cold in the winter. You're always in some sort of form of discomfort, especially the more demanding ones, right? Luther was an Augustinian monk, of which there's less than three thousand in the world today. You wanna know why? Most of them became Lutheran. Ironically, not ironically, but interestingly enough, the current Pope is an Augustinian. First one in a while, long, long while. But yeah, most of them became Lutheran. But it's a, I mean, there were certain foods they couldn't eat. You know, Luther blamed a lot of his ill health later in life on his early years as a monk and what they had to live through and things like that. Now, he also wasn't keeping up any sort of exercise schedule. He wasn't eating right, he wasn't drinking right as well. So there's, I mean, he was contributing that as well. But living the Christian life isn't about the outward practice of the faith. So you can fast or not fast. This is gonna be our argument against the Lenten fest. You can't command that as a church with closing the gates of heaven for those who violate it. You could, you can command it as a church of saying, we want you to do this and we think this is good, but we can't punish you for not observing it. And so this, this idea, for example, in Eastern Orthodoxy and Roman Catholicism, as I understand it, you are not supposed to eat on Sunday until you eat communion, until you have communion. There are in, I can't speak for Roman Catholicism, but there are in Eastern Orthodoxy, there are certain days during certain times of the year, so like Great Lent, Wednesday. Wednesday is supposed to be offered communion. Now, that communion is in a vespers service, which is not typical, but the reason that it's in a vespers service is because it's the leftover elements from Sunday morning that are being offered again, so they don't have to be re-consecrated. You don't have to go through the whole divine mass or divine liturgy in the Eastern Orthodoxy to have it. That happens in the evening. You're supposed to fast before you take communion. So you're supposed to fast all day Wednesday until you can take communion at the vespers service. What do we say about worthiness to take communion? Fasting is a great outward practice, but it's not mandatory because it's not commanded in Scripture. So we cannot withhold communion from somebody who refuses to fast. Some people like very formal prayers. And so they will use written resources in their prayer life. And other people insist it has to be exhortate, in other words, from the heart. And you can't have it written down. You can't judge one another over that. Whatever, that's a personal preference. There's no command in Scripture that prayers are supposed to be highfalutin, and no prayer in Scripture that prayers are supposed to be just from the heart in the moment. Otherwise, I mean, why would Jesus give us the Lord's Prayer?
They asked, teach us how to pray.
Yeah, he would've said, oh, you just gotta figure it out in the moment, right? Or, you know, here's a super complicated prayer. I mean, the Lord's Prayer is a very simple prayer. I mean, we make it sound greater than what it is because we keep it in the King James English. God help the poor soul that wants to use the modern translation. I don't like the modern translation, it doesn't sound right, you know? I'm memorizing King James English, okay? We're gonna use the King James English because that's how you say the Lord's Prayer. Pretty sure Jesus gave it in the King James English, right? But it's a very simple prayer. It's not grandiose. So how we pray?
This is kind of off the subject a little bit, but I know some pastors in the church service are starting to sing or chant, if that's, is that becoming normal?
It used to be the normal.
I grew up that way.
Chanting used to be the normal. To my knowledge, Lutheran churches stopped chanting. To my knowledge, Lutheran churches stopped chanting in the nineteen forties with the publication of uh, the Lutheran hymnal, TLH. And that's because the tunes weren't in there. Until that time, historically, unless somebody had a really bad cold or something, the entire service was chanted, both congregation and pastor. The, the call and response, it was all in music. Um, there are. I'm not gonna call them ancient, but there are, I mean, from the Reformation beforehand, tunes for chanting the gospel lessons, every single gospel lesson. And every single, um, I don't know about the epistle lessons, but for every single gospel lesson, there was a tune to chant it to. And, and, I mean, we have them in libraries, preserved, things like that. As worship became more informal, chanting went from the normal to the, uh, more standout practice. We are trending back towards people desiring more. Traditional's the wrong word, and ancient might be a better word. Of people wanting those worship styles. And, and so, and it's primarily millennials and younger that are making that movement. So my generation and younger, now I'm not a chanter, I can't sing with a lick, I'll freely admit that. But there is a, a, a push for that. And there's been a lot of conjecture why. Usually it's because they live in a digital world where many things are transient. And so those older forms of worship practices connect them to things that have changed very, very little throughout centuries. But it's still not the majority in the, in the LCMS that I know of. Now, for a lot of Anglican churches, they, they're chanting as well more often. Roman Catholic churches, um, the option to not chant was given in the Novus Ordo. Now with the rise of the Latin Mass, you're seeing more chanting in them. Eastern Orthodoxy has never not chanted. The role of the bishop in the Eastern Orthodox Church is to ensure that the liturgy is followed in the local congregation. That is their first and foremost, foremost role. That, that is what they do as ecclesiastical supervision, so. We obviously, we use four different divine service settings, of which chanting is optional in some. Or not even offered. And so there, there's much of divine service setting four is not chantable because there's no tunes for it. Now, we're gonna be doing divine service setting three in early service, this Sunday, late service next Sunday. We're gonna be chanting the service, I'll be speaking, y'all will be chanting, alright? Right? And that's just because, for me, divine service setting three is one that was made to be chanted. But divine service setting one, which we just did, um, we didn't chant much of the liturgy.
I know, well, the previous church we were at, we were at, they pretty much, the pastor is chanting all the time.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if that was becoming a thing that you as a pastor was required to do?
No, there, there is no requirement that pastors chant. Now, pastors will encourage other pastors to adopt these practices, whatever. I am. So in, in, in theology, there's various schools. You have your, your, um, your exegetical school, which is languages. You have your doctrinal school, so to speak. Then you have your practical school, practical is, uh, worship service, preaching, things like that. My heart is in the practical part of theology, how it applies to the person. And understanding that, and knowing, just, and just going back and reading and things like that, and that there were things that were demanded, um, in the past for various things, but there was always exceptions for whether they were practical or not. And so for me, it is, what is the nature of the congregation? So the nature of the congregation is to have a high liturgy church service, the smells and the bells, literally, the smells and the bells. That is the nature of that congregation. And having a folksy guy come in and say, you know, we're gonna start speaking and using guitar and singing kumbaya, that's gonna go over like lead balloon, right? In the same way as taking that service and placing it in here is not gonna happen. We are kind of middle of the road, and I like that, I like being middle of the road, because one, that's who I am. That's my skill set. It takes a lot of effort and practice for me to chant the one to two services that I do a year. Knowing that my wife is gonna sit there and say, why do you do this, you can't sing F in service. No, no, but she tells me all the time, she goes, you need to tell me so we can practice.
She is very good.
She is, she's a singer, she's a singer, she's the musician in our family. I took three years of band in middle school, and then I quit. Because I was, I, I, I. I played bass clarinet. And to play band in high school, you have to march, and I said, I'm not putting on a silly uniform and marching. And they said, well, then you can't be in band, I said, problem solved. But, um, so, I will say, it, it's following a cultural trend of what younger generations are asking for on that. I don't have any intention of moving us to less, to, to more informal or more formal worship. And I don't know how I compare with Pastor Dave that came before me, I think I'm a little bit more formal than he was, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Because I'll be honest, I didn't watch any of the worship services before accepting the call here. I was busy on Sunday mornings up in Spigot, Kansas, doing my, with my responsibilities up there. I wasn't going around going, how does this church do this, how does this church do that? I, I do know, um. One, one change that I did institute when I came here was eight AM service used to only do divine service setting three. And I said, I'm not gonna do that. We're gonna use the different liturgies, I'm not gonna do, like, we have these, I'm already having to basically create two different services a Sunday, but, um, yeah. We're, we're just, I think it's worked out, I think people are okay with that.
Is it still more traditional though, the early service, or it's not, I mean, I haven't been to the early service in a long time.
It'll be the exact same as what you see in late service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, the, the, there will be a different liturgy because there won't be communion. And so when we have non-communion services, we use one of the prayer offices. But it's, it's. You know, I, I look at what we did at early service a Sunday before, before for late service as well. Um, you know, did we sing the, the liturgy for the service of sacrament, then we're, in, in that service, then we're gonna do it in this service, right? But yeah, it, it's not, um. I, I will say this, we, we probably do a, we do a pretty traditional service, right? I mean, I wear all the vestments. We don't, we don't do incense, that, I mean, even the, the hypoallergenic stuff sets off my allergies, so I'm not going to do incense, not gonna do bells. Quite honestly, I think they're a distraction, in the, the times that I've experienced it. I'm not gonna prostrate myself before the altar. You know, I believe that Christ is truly present there. And I understand that he's fully God, but it just, it, it's not. You know, he calls us friends at the same time.
So Pastor, what's, is it, what are you talking about?
Incense is incense, that's smoky stuff that smells nice.
Okay, but how is that, I'm not seeing that in a Lutheran.
It's not very common in many Lutheran churches, but I think it's grace up in Tulsa. They, I mean, they have all the smells and bells up there.
Really?
A lot of, a lot of, um, upper east coast churches where there's a, a lot of Catholic population will have more of that type of stuff as well. But it's just, it's not, something very common here, it's not.
I went to a Lutheran funeral one time and they did incense around the caskets.
Yeah.
A Lutheran service?
Yeah. You can do it. You can do it, yeah, like, like you said, you, you can do it, and it's fine to do it. I'm not gonna do it, because I have allergies. And I'm not gonna be up there sneezing and coughing and hacking, trying to get through a service.
Well, I know our son went to the church with us one time and the singing, the chanting by the pastor was quite a bit of it. He says, when did this church become Catholic? Was this called?
Say, we've always been Catholic.
Well, we've always been Catholic, and that's the thing, we've always been Catholic. And, and the thing about it is, is that, um, we were, you know, on the one hand, we retain the Mass, our confessions say that. And on the other hand, we do not say you have to worship this way. Because Scripture doesn't say that, Scripture says you worship in spirit and truth, Scripture says you worship in good order. So if it's chaotic, you can't do that. Alright? If it's not in spirit and truth, you can't do that. But there is nowhere in Scripture that says we, you have to do this. Now, we, as the Lutheran Church Missouri sent it, in our past said, one of the reasons we're forming a church body is so that everybody uses the same agenda and the same hymnal, right? And that language is still in our constitution. It's been lessened, it allows basically more freedom in worship. But we're going to use doctrinally pure things, which means like, if we're gonna do a, a contemporary song, right, I'm gonna have to look at the lyrics, and if a lyric has to change, we're gonna change it, which is fine. I mean, you look at the hymns, if you go down and you look in the hymnal, if you go down and look at the bottom, you'll see on some of them, you'll see ALT period, which means it's been altered. Right? We changed the line, or we changed the word, alright? Or we dropped a whole verse for whatever reason. That happens, and has historically happened in every church body to reflect the theology of that church body for the songs that they're singing, because what you sing teaches. So anyway, I'm, I'm a, I weigh practical considerations first. So, the, and. Let's talk about our candles, alright? We have three candles up in our altar area, we have two on the altar, and then we have the Paschal candle. Well, historically, you only light the altar candles if you have communion for that service. And historically, you only light the Paschal candle at baptisms, funerals, and the Easter season. When do we light our candles? Every Sunday, because we don't have candle auverres behind us, okay? When do we light the Paschal candle? Every communion service. Why? I don't know, it's just what they did fifteen years ago when they bought it, I'm not gonna change it when I come in here, right? And honestly, to me, we're celebrating communion which ties us directly to Easter. It's actually a better use of the candle than just. Easter and baptisms and funerals, so. You know, practicality, and, and the whole thing is, the whole thing is, is with the candles. There was no religious meaning to the candles when they started using them in the church services. Look at when Christians were worshiping, well, you're worshiping on the first day of the week, which means you have to worship either early in the morning or in the evening, because everybody's gotta go to their jobs. Which means what? It's dark, which means you have to see, which means you have to have a candle. And then we're like, well, okay, these candles are gonna have this religious meaning, and these candles are gonna have this religious meaning, because there's these candles in the temple and they have religious meaning. Where are they also? God gives them religious meaning, but where are they also in the temple or in the tabernacle? They're in rooms that are closed off and people you gotta see, otherwise you're bumping into the furniture. It's like, there's a practical purpose to this as well. So you have to weigh the religious message with the practicality of it, right? We have stained glass, they give us a religious message, we have Christmas and Easter in our stained glass. But what about the side windows? Those are regular, why? Because it's impractical, AKA unaffordable, to make those stained glass windows. So we weigh the religious message of teaching some sort of biblical story with the practicality of can we afford this? We do these trade-offs all the time. So in the worship service, it's the same thing, so. We are a primarily traditional worship church. And I say that, we usually use the opening sentences, which you won't find in the hymnal. Uh, they come from a resource from CPH. We'll sometimes incorporate some other things from that as well, but not very often. And then the rest of our service is primarily from the hymnal. Now, we have altered significantly morning prayer, and that's because that's the service that we use to stream. And I wasn't gonna make you all use, learn a whole bunch of canticles that you didn't know and I didn't know, when all we could do was worship online, right? It was like, that would've gone over like a lead balloon. So there was some practicality there, so we substituted hymns and replaced that. And when we came back and, and, and to person, they said, okay, we basically kind of learned this prayer office, why don't we learn the original prayer office? We learned Mattens, right? And we keep the canticles in Mattens by and large, sometimes we, uh, we replace them with, uh, one of the other canticles in the hymnal, but by and large, we keep the Matten service, the Matten service. We don't chant the Matten service, Mattens, you can chant the whole thing, we don't do that, which is fine. Vespers, we normally don't sing the, um, canticle in the vespers service, but we pick one of the canticles in the back of the hymnal that is more easily sung. And that's the song of, um. Oh, Jesus, Elizabeth or Mary, blanking on which, Mary, the Magnificante, it's Mary. That's the song in, in vespers. So we make these practical, um, decisions all the time, and so practically speaking, well, the other thing with this is, is whatever you do, especially on Sunday morning, you have to do with excellence. I, I demand excellence in what happens on Sunday morning. Now, are we mistake free? No, I somehow deleted the words on a slide on the introit in late service this past Sunday, I don't know how I did that, but it wasn't there. We do not have the ability to have a contemporary worship service done excellently every single Sunday. So we don't attempt it, we're not gonna put something mediocre out there, so we use. Well, I, I'm just saying, like. I mean, there's some people that want things to be more contemporary, and it's like, that's fine, but we don't have the talent, we don't have the ability to do that. You have to have, and not only that, when you get that, to get that excellence, you are paying all those people as well. So we do what we can, and we do it well, we do it to the best of our ability, and that is traditional, from the hymnal, worship service with hymns. I mean, we have a thirty thousand dollar electric organ in there for a reason.
Now, the Holy Trinity and Edmond, they have a service, they have a bed, right?
Yeah, they, they, when I was a member there, they had eight hundred members.
But it's not in the main sanctuary, is it?
They have two sanctuaries, and they're actually, they're, 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 uh, they just finished, or they're in the middle of redoing their, um, Family Life Center, and renovating that into a sanctuary. So what they did is, is they had a sanctuary, they built their current big sanctuary, renovated that sanctuary into a fellowship hall. When they started that service, they started having it in there, they've outgrown that space and now they're in there. But again, when I was a member there, up until fourteen years ago, because I was a member there until I was ordained and, or installed in my first call, there was eight hundred members in the congregation. We don't have three hundred. They have a much wider talent base, just practically speaking. And obviously, with that many members, they have a higher budget, because there's more monies coming in, and so they can pay those people to do that.
Um, so Messiah has a band too?
Yeah.
Where where is it at?
It's in the sanctuary. It's not in the altar. Do you know how it's around? The altar's right there. It's over to the side.
Yeah.
Well, I don't like bands.
I love it when Heidi plays the guitar.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah.
And with her piano playing out.
Yeah, I like and I like that. That's.
Now, there's some songs that are better with the guitar. "I'll Fly Away", Delores played it on piano.
Yeah.
Or played it on the organ, and then uh we had it on guitar in the late service. It just sounds better on guitar. It just does.
I used to sing a sol- solos periodically in St. John's. My the choir director would say, I can't sing in the garden. What's in that uh song?
I have no idea.
She would say that you can't sing, and I'll I why are the words that she said, it's something about the words?
I'd have to look at the words.
That's one of the songs that we sang at my mother's funeral. She loved that.
Yeah, it's very popular.
Yeah.
Very popular.
And well, that's just when I wanted to do it. And she said, no, I'm sorry that you can't.
Now, we'll say this. We get that hymn or we get that song requested at funerals. Um, and my thing is, we get all sorts of songs requested at funerals. Uh, my thing is, is that we have to have a license for it, otherwise we can't use it. Um, these companies aren't gonna come and sue a church. It would it would be such bad optics. They would lose so many people. Um, and and so people have even told me that, well, we're not gonna get sued. You're not gonna get in trouble. And my response is, the Seventh Commandment is still the Seventh Commandment. And if we don't have a license for it, it is stealing to use somebody else's intellectual property and not pay them for that at the rate that they have agreed should be paid them for their intellectual property. So we have a license to use our hymns through um our our uh. Through Lutheran Service Builder, but there's two hymns in there that we cannot use because Lutheran Service Builder was published in two thousand and six. Before all these licensing agreements were entered into by a lot of people. And those two hymns are thankfully under CCLI, which we also have a license for. Not only do we have a license to use CCLI music, but we also have a streaming license, because there's a difference between just using it, not streaming, and using it, streaming. And so both times we use those hymns that if we're gonna be streaming, they are covered under our CCL- CCLI license, and that is the information. I know nobody ever reads the little squares on the bottom with on the final song panel, um, but that is what all that information is saying. Who wrote it? Is it copyrighted? And who is administering the license?
The commercial.
Right? Because the Seventh Commandment is still the Seventh Commandment. So churches should not steal. Um, so. So asceticism, so you on one hand, you have this asceticism, you have this basically kind of like this very austere lifestyle. On the other hand, you have the worship of angels. You have kind of this grandiose um false religion as well, right? You see both of them happening, um, going on in detail about visions puffed up without reason by his sensuous mind. Now, um, in Gnosticism, the the ancient Gnosticism, there was a huge sexual component, a part of it, as a as a part of it. Um, and. I mean. You know, when Paul is, well, that's First Corinthians. The the leaders of Gnosticism slept with young women. I mean, that was part of it is is um. And and you know, there's orgies and all sorts of stuff going on, drunkenness, things like that. And so when, so like in Irenaeus's um or Irenaeus's uh against heresies, you know, one of the things he mentions is that. That the women that were seduced into this, when they come back to the faith, I mean, one of the things that they have to recant of and confess to is all those depraved acts that they did. Um, and so again, this is another reason why we think that what is happening in Colossae is some sort of proto-Gnosticism or pre-Gnosticism that is that is developing there. Because we've seen kind of this this special knowledge language, and now we're we're seeing, you know, sensuous. Sensuality, you know, things like that 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 are incorporated there. Not holding fast to the head. In other words, not holding fast to Christ, and because what makes a disciple? A disciple is made through baptism and teaching all I have commanded you, right? Well, what has he commanded us? He's commanded us to ten commandments. He's commanded us to love God. He's commanded us to love our neighbor, right? So living that lifestyle, well, if you're not holding fast to the head, you're not holding fast to what he has taught. From whom the whole body nourished and knit together through its joints and ligaments grows with a growth that is from God. And so that's also another thing here for us today, is that the growth of the church is from God. It's not from us. Um, where are the fastest growing church in the Oklahoma district? Hands down. Since since um twenty twenty-two, we've gained over sixty members. You know, that's and that's just because like that's how far back is is easily available to see. Um. And so people sit there and say, well, what are you doing at Christ Lutheran? And I was like, well, first of all, it's not what we're doing, right? And I'm very open with that, because I also go as a as evangelism executive. I go and I talk with other churches about evangelism and outreach and things like that, and so they wanna know what what do you do as well, right? And it's not about what we do. I mean, there's some stuff that's happening that we have zero control over. And I'm honest with people. One of the reasons we've gained new members is because our area is growing and people have moved here, and we're the closest Lutheran church to them. Right? So whether they move from Texas or California or whether they move from Edmond, right? Well, if you wanna go up to church in Edmond, you're talking forty-five minute drive one way. Whereas if you live in that neighborhood over there, you're here in under five minutes, right? So that's one way we've gotten growth. Now, we've gotten growth from non-Christians as well, and we've gotten growth from people who are not Lutheran as well. Um, and again, who gives the growth? It's God who gives the growth, but I would not expect the growth that we have here to be the same growth that happened in. Hooker, Oklahoma, right? I say that because the monuments aren't here. They're probably at a Veterans Day thing. Um. Oh, they're at the doctor? Okay.
I don't know. I don't know what.
Okay, but but um, because the communities are vastly different, right? The the communities are vastly different. Um, now, I will say this. On the practical earthly side, we are very intentional about being very um outreach oriented with. While still taking care of our members, right? You have to balance outreach and inreach. Um, you can't be emphasize one over the other. That's that's really, really bad. So uh we do, we do um put a lot of focus on outreach while we are also making sure that we're taking care of our members. Um, and and not if if we weren't taking care of our members, it didn't matter how many people are coming in. They're gonna go out the back door. Um, we're very intentional about our advertising dollars. Um, and and what gets us the best return on investment, if you will. So what is our pure paid advertising? I just had this conversation with some people. Um, our pure paid advertising is Christmas and Easter services, you know, where we buy um Facebook ads. To promote those. Um, every other advertising dollar that we spend is supporting another cause. So we advertise with Mustang uh Public Schools Athletics. Because it is supporting a program within the high school geared for rewarding students and the effort that they put in. Right? So it's not just about, yeah, they slap our name and we and you know, we get our symbol put up um for about six seconds, twice a quarter. At the the football games and stuff. Um, and yes, fully recognizing that how Mustang Public Schools is set up. They've tried to bring in every single school through the high school programs, especially the sporting programs, trying to bring in families and things like that. They are very, very intentional about building community and building the community of the school, because the school district is like eighty-three square miles and the town is twelve square miles. So they're they're trying to build a community, but. We are also making sure that we are supporting them, not just. It's not a one-way street, so to speak. It's not just about us, but it's, hey. Is there a program or something that we can support that helps people? And all our other advertising monies does that, um, how we do. Um, we are a member of the Mustang Chamber of Commerce. Um, the Chamber of Commerce supports charities and encourages charities in Mustang. Um, and they have various things and and other, we have other opportunities to advertise with them that would be supporting. Either community outreach or community building or people in need, right? So there there we're not just buying TV ads. And as long as I'm pastor here, we will never just buy TV ads, as as long as I have to say, or radio ads. Like there, like I said, the only pure advertising we do is very limited on Facebook, and that is because. Those times of the year, Christmas and Easter, you have people looking for those services. And so it's like, hey, this is just a way to get us out there for people to know that that we are here, but otherwise, it is, are we supporting somebody?
You know something we do well here? I mean, as soon as I walked in here. The first time, I could tell everybody loves each other. The whole place is um, it's not clicky or everybody knows everybody and everybody supports everybody and everybody loves everybody. It's it's.
And that is that is the great thing of a small church.
Yeah.
Um, now, I will say this. If we continue to grow on the trajectory that we're growing, and the reason that we have a building project going on. Um, we will have to be more intentional about that, more intentional about whole church, social. Uh, gatherings outside of just the worship service, because it'll just be harder and harder to know everybody.
Yeah.
And and.
Well, it's it's true. We need to do that. It's something you can feel the minute you walk in the door. You feel accepted and and just like you belong.
But also touching on that and and the danger of the danger of growing too large. Um, it's also why I believe that churches. If they are growing and they are pulling people from a community, a significant amount of people from a community. That is not the actual community right there, they should start looking at planting there. Now, we're supporting the Piedmont plant right now. Um, but I told the district, or not the district, I told our circuit, I was like, if we're not gonna plant in Piedmont. Because I I think we should, because it's a growing community. There's not a church there. They're thirty minutes from every single church. Um, if we're not gonna plant in Piedmont, I'm gonna be talking with my church about planting in Tuttle and what that would look like, because we pull a significant amount of people from Tuttle. And I know there used to be a church plant down there. Um, I don't wanna get into all of that, but it's like, you know, um. The my idea of a pastor is not to try to get as many people to my location. My idea as a pastor is trying to get churches where people are at, and then those churches work on evangelism in those locales. And Tuttle is still a twenty-minute drive. Even with the bridge. Um, it's a lot less than the forty-five minutes it used to be, but. What?
Awesome. We just live down Fifty-Ninth and we're a fifteen-minute drive.
I mean, once you get past the Mustang City limits and the speed limit goes up to, you know, it says sixty-five, but. That's more of a suggestion.
That's where we are.
Yeah.
Well, I lived out there eighteen years and I didn't go sixty-five down Sierra Road.
Yeah.
I went seventy-five.
Yeah, so so anyway, um, I forgot. So it's not about, it's not, you know, God gives the growth. God gives the growth. And so um, I always feel weird when people are like, well, what are you doing? I'll be like, I'll tell you what I'm doing, but there's no guarantee that this is gonna work there, because I don't. I truly, like, when people are like, I gotta keep on preaching these sermons, pastors, so people keep on coming to church, I was like, don't, don't. It's not about me. It's about Jesus. It should always be about Jesus, because one day, I won't be here. I'll be dead. And if it's all tied to me. If it's all tied to me, that bodes bad things for the church, right? My goal is not to point you to me. My goal is to point you to Jesus. Um, and that should be every church's goal, and a church that is shrinking in membership is by no means less faithful than a church that is growing in membership. In fact, you can be quite the opposite. God gives the growth. He prunes and he grows. It's his garden, right? Um, and and so we don't tie numerical growth to faithfulness. We don't tie numerical growth or decline to health. Of the congregation or anything else like that, that you start talking in those terms and it takes you to bad places. It takes you to unscriptural places. So um, we just make sure we hold fast to the head, and if God grows us numerically, God grows us numerically. If God shrinks us numerically, God shrinks us numerically. It's in his divine plan, and we're just gonna trust the plan. Um, we're gonna try to finish this paragraph here, so we're gonna go a little bit longer. If with Christ you die to the elemental spirits of the world, why, as if you were still alive in the world, you submit to regulations. Do not handle, do not taste, do not touch, referring to things that all perish as they are used according to human precepts and teachings. These have indeed an appearance of wisdom in promoting self-made religion and asceticism and severity to the body, but they are of no value in stopping the indulgence of the flesh. So the elemental spirits are not supposed to be confused with um. Demonic spirits. I'm trying to think, is there a footnote on here about this elemental spirit? See note verse eight, regulations. What's the note on verse eight? Uh, verse eight, philosophy, philosophy, human tradition is post-tradition. Elements is false teachings that are constructed from the basic elements of the fallen universe. Uh, see Colations four, three and nine, in Colossians, they are closely related to fallen angels, eighteen through twenty. Well, now we're on eighteen through twenty.
My my Bible says on two twenty that elemental spiritual forces stand behind the beliefs and practices of pagans.
They do, right? So it's not the. It's not the demons themselves. But it's the the teachings constructed on the worship of demons, right? So worshiping tree spirits, worshiping rock spirits, worshiping earth spirits, worshiping fire, worshiping light. Basically constructing your cosmology off of creation. Instead of the Creator. That's what's meant by elemental spirits. Alright? Um, right? Were they worshiping idols? Are the demons behind the idols? You're confused?
Yeah, I'm going, where are we getting demons out of this passage?
So in verse twenty, in Christ you died to the elemental spirits of the world. Yeah, that's verse twenty. Okay, um, and so what Paul is talking about is, so again, this is Gnosticism ties into this in in a lot of ways. So the elemental spirits of this world, in other words, it's not the demons themselves, but it's the pagan religions. That are built off of observing nature and worshiping the things of nature, worshiping the things of creation as opposed to the Creator. So when they engage in idol worship, right, when the pagans engage engage in idol worship, are they worshiping the demon or are they worshiping the idol? The answer is both. Um. So when wiccans today engage in tree worship or elemental worship, are they worshiping demons or are they worshiping the idols? The answer is both, and they they build their cosmology, their 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 um, their religion off of this. Of of putting spiritual value on elemental things while completely missing the Creator of those things. That that's what this verse is is dealing with, so. Um. And and he's tying it to man-made traditions. Because it's using human reason to. because it's using human reason to import meanings to this. Um, for example, Saint Boniface famously chopped down Thor's tree. In this town in Germany, Thuringia? I can't remember where, someplace in Germany. Um, the people of the town believed that they had to take care of this tree, otherwise bad things would happen. Anybody who harmed the tree, Thor would strike down. And if they didn't take care of the tree, the crops would fail and things like that. Um, Boniface takes an axe and just chops it down. And they're like, and you weren't struck dead? No. They don't kill him for it. They're, they're actually amazed. It actually kind of breaks this idea, oh, we have to worship this tree. Um, so this, this, the this idea of you don't handle things, you don't taste things, you don't touch certain things. Um, you can see where there is regulations of that in the Old Testament, but that is not what Paul is talking about. He's not talking about the Old Testament clean, unclean rituals um, or, or categories. Here he is tying that to pagan worship and, and what was going on around there. And again, this form of Gnosticism where what is bad, everything physical is bad. Light is good because light's not physical, right? Um, but the spirit is, the spiritual world is trapped in the physical world, so you get to escape the physical world. And so this idea of there are certain things that you don't do. Um, and by not doing them, by not tasting these things, eating these things or whatever, kind of, again, this ascetic lifestyle, you gain salvation. This is one of the reasons why we say every religion outside of Christianity is works righteousness. It's about you gaining salvation. So, for example, what's a pagan religion where you can't eat cows?
Hindu.
Hindu. Why? Cows are sacred. Cause cows give you milk. And milk turns into cheese and to ghee. What? It's food. Every, so, so Luther calls it the god of the belly. The god of the belly. Every false religion, even false understanding as a Christianity ultimately tie back to, am I getting fed tonight? What do I need to do so there is food on the table? This is why he calls it the god of the belly. So you make certain sacrifices to ensure good crops, because good crops mean you eat. So the gods are pleased off your sacrifices, so they give you food, so ultimately your god is actually your belly. Society is based off this way. Why do you have to have a job? Ultimately, to eat. Ultimately, to eat. Everything else comes after that. If you don't eat, doesn't matter if you have a roof. Um, so, so the fact that, okay, I could butcher this animal and get meat for a day. Or if I keep this animal alive, it provides me with cheese and fat. Um, so protein, sugar, fat, and then also just clarified uh fat as well, which can store long-term and I can cook other foods in to provide nutrients. I mean, it makes absolute sense that you are going to tie a um religious significance to that. And you see this in culture after culture after culture, whether it's the wheat harvest or whether it's sacred cows. But those things perish. They're not immortal. And because they perish, they are not to be worshipped. Doesn't matter what you do, the tree is eventually going to die. And so then you have to come out with the mythos, oh, we took this seed, acorn, whatever it is, from the ancient, from, from the sacred tree and we planted a new one and the cycle starts again, right? I mean, the cows eventually are going to die. Yeah, you're going to have to have cows. Everything, everything is like that. Um, you're going to have a drought because the pagan gods aren't actually God and they can't control the weather. You're going to have a drought. Which means the crops aren't going to come in. Not only that, what do you eat? What happens to the good crop? You eat it. What happens to what you eat? Comes fertilizing. Perishable. Um, so in effect, if you are alive in Christ and you're still in the world, but not of the world, why are you so focused on the things that pass away? Why are you treating those things as special? They're perishable. They're not the creator. They're not going to make you better or worse. And so you can have priority and importance on them, but they're not the thing to worry about. And they don't make or break your faith. Um, according to human precepts and teachings. These have indeed an appearance of wisdom in promoting self-made religion and asceticism and severity to the body, but they are of no value in stopping the indulgence of the flesh. Hey, listen, you know, holy men living as hermits, I mean, it seems important. They're dedicating their life to God. In the end, does it do anything? Does it change anything? Nope. You're just as justified as they are. You're just as justified as they are. And not only that, living that ascetic lifestyle isn't going to change your sin nature. Isn't going to change the pull to sin. In fact, in and of itself, it can become sin. Again, this is our entire argument on the monastic orders. That they have become sin because they're taught that they merit grace. And they're taught that they merit grace, not just for the individual, but for all society. And it takes people out of proper vocations. It tells the milkmaid that what you're doing is not worth anything, even though what she's doing is keeping people alive. And this guy over here praying in the middle of the night is actually doing the greater work. Praying in the middle of the night is great for you, but it does nothing for anybody else. I mean, unless you pray for anybody else. You guys understand my point, right? Um, so I mean, this whole passage here, I mean, this is going to be one of the, the base texts, foundational texts that we're going to use when we talk about what is actually the Christian life and what is, what, what the Christian life should look like and what it should not look like. And it should not look like abandoning your neighbor. It should not look like emphasizing a holier-than-thou kind of thing. Now, if people need to take a step back from society for a bit, so be it. But you don't place, you don't sit there and say you're earning extra grace or you're earning extra merit off of that. I mean, Jesus retreated from the crowds every now and then, went off by himself to pray. Yeah, you need, you need quiet time. It needs to be an extended period. By all means, okay? Figure out, figure out how you can set that up in your life. But it doesn't make you extra special in the eyes of God. And it doesn't save society from itself, because only Christ does that. Any other questions? Okay. We'll start chapter three. Do we meet next week? I gotta look. We meet next week. We meet the eighteenth. Okay. We don't meet the twenty-fifth.
We're not meeting next week?
No, we are meeting next week. We're not meeting the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So we meet the eighteenth. If you live in Mustang, the eighteenth is election day for your mayor. It's FYI. I think that's the only issue on the ballot.